Let me call the City Council Work Session to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining, Jermaine.
Here.
Lamoore.
Present.
Felder.
Here.
Hader. Stilgrave.
Excuse.
Mayor Clark.
Present. City Manager Robinson, we have our work session, we have an item that we're presenting. Introductions of who you want to make the introductions.
Yes, Your Honor and Council, I'd like to first allow Mr. Vanasacker, our Deputy Director of Economic Development and Community, Economic and Community Development, to introduce our presenter tonight.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Matt Vanasacker. Dave just explained my title, so I feel like that would be redundant to repeat. Here tonight to talk about something that's been in the works for, Mark just said, for two years. It's been one year and one day since I started with the city. So this has been a project that I've been working on the last year, and we're very excited to present tonight some of the findings from the residential housing strategy. And tonight, to do that and to lead our presentation, I welcome Rowan Brady. Rowan was previously with the team at Beckett and Raider, and he was the lead on this project from their standpoint, before leaving us in January to take a position with the City of Grand Rapids. But in his, as he was leaving, he said, "If you ever need me to come back and present on it, I'm more than happy to do so." So we did take him up on that offer tonight. So very excited to talk about some of the objectives outlined and get through the project. I think you'll find that it really has met all of the expectations that we had throughout this process. So with that, I will turn things over to Rowan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening. Thank you all for having me. As Matt said, I'll be presenting on the 2024 Housing Residential Strategy Memo or Report that we put together. We've been working on it for about four months since we started this project. It's really looking at what are the strategies the city can implement for not only new housing construction? How can we incentivize and encourage new housing construction? But how can we support the existing neighborhoods and the existing housing stock? You know, a strategy is really incomplete if you only look at one or the other. So we attempted to look at both. And I think you'll find out that we came up with some really strong strategies for both incentivizing new construction and supporting the existing neighborhoods and existing housing stock. Like Matt said, I'm with Beckett and Raider. Beckett and Raider is a smaller urban planning, landscape architecture, engineering firm based out of Ann Arbor with offices in Traverse City, Potoski, and Marquette. We were also lucky to partner with Karp Strategies, which is a housing specialty firm out of New York City. So they contributed to this report as well. I'll call out their bits and pieces as I go through the presentation tonight. They don't have any representatives here, as they're based in New York. So I'll do my best to kind of speak to their pieces, and they were really great to work with. And so the presentation summary, we'll cover what are the existing conditions in Monroe? You know, where are we now? And how have shifts in demographics and economic factors influenced Monroe's housing stock and the housing market in the city? What are the conditions of Monroe's neighborhoods? And then we'll transition into housing barriers. So what is hindering where we want to be? And how can we overcome those barriers? And then finally, wrapping up with an overview of what are the future opportunities? What are the opportunities for both the community and our neighborhoods? And then what is next? What are the next steps after, you know, we read, digest, and implement this report? But before I get started, kind of deep into the weeds of the report and the presentation, I would love to hear from all of you on what do you see as the primary housing goals for the city, maybe over the next five to 10 years? Clerk Lavoy, I apologize to pick on you first. But, you know, if anything jumped to the top of your head, you know, what are the main housing goals for the city, for the neighborhoods? Has there been something you've been thinking about over the past couple of years? Maybe something that's popped up in city documents over the past five years?
Um, there has been, but I think I'm going to defer to council since they vote on it.
Yeah.
But yes, there's time.
Yeah. Councilperson Felder?
What do you got?
Maybe a couple of high, high over, high level bullet points.
I think that in large part, the growth, both in terms of population and in terms of economic prosperity of the city is a function of primarily three different things. One of which is the housing availability to be able to have residents reside within the city limits. Another is the spendable capital that they have at hand. And the third is going to be the proportion of income that they spend inside the city. And I know that that was part of our residential, our retail market analysis that we did in, I think, 2017. So we have some of these numbers available in terms of planning our growth. And then in terms of the growth that we can bring to bear, it's going to have downstream effects on the sort of amenities that we as a city can afford. So if you're talking about development or growth of the city or progress moving forward, I think that we really have to start with those variables. And housing availability and accessibility has long been a challenge for us as we move forward. Of course, we're mostly built out as it exists right now, and we're trapped by chartered townships. So we have a scarcity of shovel-ready sites within the city by which to employ that strategy. Therefore, we need to be fairly selfish about the sites that we look at and how we utilize them, because we don't have as much space to expand or opportunities for development as the townships do. So whereas we otherwise might say, where you might see a local government in one of the townships at the edge of town saying yes to a project, we may have to say no, because it doesn't reach the highest and best use that we might have for that project and what it would need to fulfill. And also, as part of that, are the city's role in terms of that development, both in terms of vision and planning. And then infrastructure, of course, has costs. And so the tax revenue that you want to achieve from the properties needs to be sustainable for the investment that you're making from the revenue that you're getting out. So, I mean, that's a couple of them. We can get into more zoning requirements, minimum parking standards, net value per acre, and Florida area ratios, but I, yeah, I don't know.
Great.
We only have an hour and a half work session, so.
Councilperson Lamoore?
Yeah, I mean, there's pretty much three different things I look at when I'm looking for the housing strategy. And I want to say that I want to look for that housing retail mix, you know, not only downtown, but outside of here, too. You know, like we have the old Lazy Boy area that we're developing now. We're looking at the Hyde property. Some different things there as far as that could mix together, because I think that's what the people desire. Infill projects, for sure. Let's get those things taken care of, because that takes care of a lot of other things along with it, blight, et cetera. And number three, I think, continuing the enforcement of our blight policies, just to make sure that what is out there is usable. And not only usable, but, you know, clean for the rest of the residents in town as well.
Yeah, thank you. Councilperson Jermaine?
Thank you. I look at it as a lack of, we have a lack of senior housing. We have a lack of small family homes or start-out homes for young couples that are starting out. There's, we don't have anything to offer them. And then affordable housing as well.
Thank you. Mayor Clark?
Sure. As I, we've, as a council, talked about this, about different types. And I think that we're all pretty close. I think that when you look at our housing and, you know, look at it as infill, new development, and also multi-use housing. And I think that we have to look at that in rather be single-family homes, duplex townhouse type, multi-unit, because the density that's needed for some of those. And also our downtown residential housing, which we have many. But some are less in good condition. And I think the ones that are being rehabilitated now are meeting today's needs. And they are across the board regarding attainable. You know, attainable from a cost standpoint. But the same has to be applied to the new development and the infill. And I think they need to fit within the neighborhoods, the type of housing that we're looking at. And I agree with Councilwoman Jermaine, I think, senior housing and senior housing complexes. I think it's those that are independent living, but also in the future will be, you know, some assisted living. But those seniors are looking for places as well. And we have, I think, many opportunities. We have places where new development can come in. And we have many infill sites. I think the last count was somewhere around 78 infill lots that could sustain a new housing. So that's my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you all. I'll certainly touch on, I think, all of these themes tonight as kind of in context of the report and maybe some higher-level discussions and trends that we've been seeing both in the state and nationally. So I'll briefly switch to the existing conditions of Monroe's housing stock. I pulled this text directly from the report, because I thought it really encapsulated existing conditions well. "Like many municipalities across the country, the City of Monroe faces challenges with their existing housing market. An aging population and housing stock, coupled with rising interest rates and a lack of construction funding, have put homeownership out of reach for many." The report goes into a lot of more of the data, facts, and figures. I'll touch on a couple of those tonight. But the report will have a lot of documentation to kind of explain these trends and show how they relate to Monroe, but also the region, comparing and contrasting the city and the county in southeast Michigan. The report does a really nice job of showing the differences and similarities between all of those trends. Some major trends that are influencing housing in the city. I heard Mayor Clark, Councilperson Jermaine, touch on an aging population, the need to provide housing for seniors. The country is rapidly aging at a rate that it hasn't existed in the United States. And older populations tend to downsize. And they have different functional requirements out of their housing units. So if you think about, as someone ages in their home, maybe they had all the bedrooms on the second floor, and it becomes more challenging for them to access their bedroom going up and down the stairs. And so can we plan for housing and develop housing that meets the requirements of those not only older population, but even those that have mobility challenges? So thinking about nuances in not only how we provide housing, but how that housing is designed for individuals and people with specialized needs. The City of Monroe has a stable number of households. So we're projecting the demand for housing will kind of stay constant with the past couple of years in the city. There aren't rapidly changing numbers in populations or households in the city compared to other areas of the state. So that demand, we project to remain relatively stable over the next five years. Monroe has some modest and counterbalancing economics. The manufacturing sector is actually growing in southeast Michigan. The automotive sector, not so much. But other manufacturing elements specifically around small industry are rapidly growing with the loss of several major anchors in the region. You know, the closure of the power plant has significant, has potential to significantly impact the local economy and the tax base and influence the housing market. On the other side, there is new regional investment coming into the area. The opening of the Gordy Howe Bridge will bring a lot of international trade, warehousing, transportation industries to the region. And Ford is heavily investing in the area and in the region. I think 200 million? No, more than that. A lot of, they're investing a lot of money into the region with the opening of a couple new manufacturing plants and sectors. The city's housing stock is a diverse housing stock compared to the region. There are a lot more multifamily townhomes, multi-units in the city compared to the region. But it's an older housing stock. And that housing stock tends to have some quality challenges along with it. And the city has a really strong commuter base. There's roughly 7,000 people traveling into the city for work, less leaving the city. So are there opportunities to provide housing for those people traveling into the city? Can we get some of those commuters to actually live and work in the city as opposing to driving in and out every single day? So just briefly, I want to touch on the cost of housing. The cost of housing has risen in Monroe roughly 11% from 2018 to 2013. It has risen, but not as fast as the county, which has risen 51% over that time. And so while the City of Monroe's housing costs are rising, they're rising at a rate slower than the county, which has potential to attract people to Monroe who are looking for more affordable solutions than what they can find outside of Monroe in the townships and elsewhere in the county. And the City of Monroe supplies the majority of the rental units for the county. So those individuals who can't afford homeownership or are merely looking to rent often look at the City of Monroe for those housing options. We also looked at the neighborhoods as part of this report. We thought it was important to not only look at individual housing units, but the neighborhoods that those housing units are located in. Healthy and vibrant neighborhoods are a combination of both placemaking and market factors. So the placemaking elements, things like sidewalks, parks, schools, those softer amenities that really make neighborhoods livable and, you know, enjoyable places to be. And those market factors, which are housing price, housing cost, housing availability, affordability, and housing conditions. And we actually looked at both of these factors to analyze Monroe's neighborhoods and evaluate the condition of every single neighborhood in the city. Matt and Mark did a really nice job of outlining where the residential properties are and where those neighborhood boundaries are. And we actually quantified both placemaking and market factors to really put numbers to this analysis. So I'll start with placemaking. The factors that we looked at for the placemaking analysis of Monroe's neighborhoods were the availability of sidewalks. What was the tree canopy coverage? Do some neighborhoods have more trees than others? What is the proximity for neighborhood schools? Can kids walk to school, walk to the elementary, walk to the high school, walk to the middle school? Are they close to any commercial centers? Or are there shops, restaurants, dining near some neighborhoods? Do they have adequate access to public transit? Can you get on a bus stop or a bus line really near to where you live? And then do you have local parks in your neighborhood? All of these factors contribute to the livability of a neighborhood and are really those soft amenities that make neighborhoods great places to be. And so we did a bunch of math, looked at all the numbers, and came up with this map. So the lighter colors that you see, the yellows, the reds, are the parcels in the city that have high placemaking elements. You can see kind of around downtown Monroe. This map is only showing the residential parcels, by the way. Around downtown Monroe is where you have a lot of those placemaking elements. Historic neighborhoods and historic cores tend to have the most amenities. And so you can see kind of as you transition outwards from the center of the city, those placemaking attributes tend to decline. And some of the newer neighborhoods, they don't have as many placemaking elements. But there are certain parks and schools that really enhance the placemaking elements of the city. And then what does this look like when we translate it to a neighborhood scale? And so you can see here, we kind of combined all of these factors into each neighborhood. And the brighter the color, the more placemaking elements that that neighborhood has. So the Old Village, the historic core of the city, has the most placemaking elements. And that table there on the right kind of ranks them from most to least. So Winston Waterloo and Hubert Bentley have the lowest placemaking element out of all the neighborhoods in the city. Moving on to the market and physical factors. So we looked at the number of building permits that were pulled, the blight citations, the taxable value of properties, recent residential sales, and recent public investment into the neighborhoods to quantify those market and physical factors. That map is a lot harder to identify trends. It's kind of all over the place. But you can see that the neighborhoods that have higher values tend to be in the north and the northeast of the city. And then when we translate it to a neighborhood scale, you can see that holds true. The more northern and northeastern neighborhoods have the highest market and physical neighborhood attributes. Detroit Harbor and Orchard East have the lowest market and physical attributes. And again, that relates back to those blight citations, residential sales, number of permits pulled. And the report lays out all of this math. So if you're really wanting to know where all of these numbers come from, it'll be detailed in the report. We also surveyed portions of the city, looking for housing that was in poor condition. We only surveyed these two areas. It's a little hard to see, but they're outlined by blue here and here. And all of those orange dots represent housing that's in poor condition. So if it had siding falling off, there were holes in the roof, broken windows, or just generally in a poor state of maintenance. We flagged it as a house in poor condition. We spent about a day driving around these two areas of the city, looking for those properties to identify if there were any major trends. You know, are we seeing poor siding across all of these houses or neighborhoods? Do they all have roof issues? So we could target specific rehabilitation strategies to address the needs of the housing stock. Yep.
Describe to me what the area of concern is in purple.
Yeah, that was a recommendation from staff and my boss, John Icoangeli. We didn't have an opportunity to look at all areas of the city, because we were only doing it for a day. So that was an opportunity for a neighborhood.
Is this another targeted area that you didn't get to?
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks.
Any questions on the existing housing conditions before I move on to the housing barriers? So identifying housing barriers, there are many factors considered in a decision to invest in a residential real estate. Some of these factors are beyond the control of a municipality, but others may be the result of unintended consequences of public policy. So, you know, you as elected officials do the best with the information that you have and make the decisions to the best of your knowledge. But, you know, through the lens of history, not all of those decisions have their intended outcomes. And we really identified four public policy initiatives that have been taken in the past that have had some negative consequences for the housing stock. So the expansion of the water and sewer infrastructure allowed developers in the townships to increase their density of their housing developments, because they no longer had to provide larger lots to accommodate wells and septic systems. So that increased the availability and profitability of developing residential units in the township, which has a direct correlation to the influence of Monroe's housing stock and housing market. And then looking at tax burden. So the decrease in tax value from the DTE closure will reduce the city's taxable valuation by over 40%. As a result, to make up some of that loss, some of that tax burden will shift the residential properties in the city. So again, influencing housing affordability and housing attainability and the stress put on the housing stock. And then education and quality. Those of you who have children, you certainly know the importance of having good quality schools in your neighborhood and in your area for your children. So when people are looking at areas to settle down, residential and educational quality is something that is top of mind for a lot of families and influences where they choose to live. And then downtown Monroe, downtown Monroe, the viability or lack thereof of a strong downtown can influence where people like to live, especially a lot of young people. I know when I was looking at where I wanted to live after college, strong downtowns and neighborhoods close to downtowns were at the top of my list. And so that access to an entertainment space, restaurants, retail, is especially important for a lot of people and a lot of young professionals when they're looking to relocate. So having a strong downtown is a really big draw for a lot of people looking to relocate. And a lack thereof of a strong downtown can be a negative factor for people looking to relocate. So we also reviewed the City of Monroe's zoning ordinance in its entirety and looked at what are some maybe hidden barriers for developing housing in the community? Are there language that's maybe been in the zoning ordinance for 30 to 40 years that is having a negative impact on housing construction and we're just not realizing it? And so we really flagged nine key issues or nine key zoning changes that will be beneficial to improve the housing stock and housing availability in the community. Number one, reduce the number, these are, by the way, in no particular order, but reducing the number of required parking spaces for residential dwelling units. I believe the city is at two per unit. So reducing that maybe down to one and a half or one will increase the amount of space available for residential development and maybe free up some lots that were undeveloped because of that requirement and space requirement and make that a little bit more profitable. You know, there's a saying, and housing policy and housing planning, that we're trying to house people, not house cars. And so if we can revise those parking standards to make it easier to house people rather than house cars, that's something we certainly want to look at. And these, by all means, are just suggestions. They're not, you know, there's no language drafted. There's no action in the works. These are really suggestions for you as a council and planning commission to take a look at as potential revisions to the zoning ordinance. Permitting two-family structures by right in certain zoning districts. So two-family structures can either be by right or through special land use. Making them by right reduces a lot of red tape and a lot of time in the development process, making them a little bit more affordable, opening up the areas in the city for two-family construction. I do want to note that it's really important that two-family construction, especially in existing residential areas, fits within the character of the neighborhood. There's a lot of ways to develop housing, a lot of really good ways to develop housing. And there are a lot of really bad ways to develop housing. So making sure that new housing construction really fits within the residential character of the community, looks the same, fits seamlessly within the neighborhood, especially the older neighborhoods that have a defined character and a defined sense of place. And then expanding the type of housing permitted in the zoning ordinance. The City of Monroe's zoning ordinance defines three types of housing, single-family, two-family, and multifamily. And there's, in reality, a really broad range of housing in between two-family and multifamily, thinking about attached single-family or townhomes, threeplexes, quadplexes, you know, three units or four units a building. So adding those definitions into the zoning ordinance, permitting them in certain areas, either by right or special land use, will open up the opportunities for housing development and for that more, smaller-scale housing development that really fits within existing characters, excuse me, in existing neighborhoods and with the character of those neighborhoods. Allowing for accessory dwelling units. The zoning ordinance pretty explicitly states that no accessory structure shall be used for a residential purpose. So are there maybe carriage houses or garages that could support a small unit above a garage or maybe in addition onto someone's house? You may have heard them referred to as granny flats. So looking for those opportunities to add additional housing units without a lot of construction. And then expanding, expand where converting large homes to multiple units is allowed. There's a pretty narrow area of the city where that's allowed. Of course, there are concerns with converting a single-family into multifamily or two-family, three-family. It has to be done with care, making sure that there are the services and amenities to support that conversion from a single-family to a two- A two or a three family, there's some really good examples from communities across Michigan. Thinking Detroit and Marquette that have really good language about how to go about this in a cautious but supportive way. And then permitting two homes on lots that are twice the minimum size. If you're not familiar with the ins and outs of zoning. Housing development or really any development is built on a lot size, so. For example, to build a single family home, you might need twenty five hundred square feet. We're recommending for lots that are twice the minimum, five thousand square feet, you're able to put two units on that lot. You could, in theory, split those lots to create two lots, but that's again, another administrative hurdle that's preventing housing construction. And so for those lots that are twice the size, allowing for two units on that lot, just not having to split those units. And of course, there's a lot of nuance in this, making sure that the setbacks are correct, the homes are spaced evenly. But that's just broadly a general recommendation. And then defining periods for rental inspections. Rental, the city's rental inspection program inspects units every three years. We're recommending looking at a kind of a tiered system, specifically for neighborhoods that have. Poor housing conditions for their rental units, maybe inspecting those units every two years rather than three. So the city can keep up on enforcement and doing targeted enforcement and targeting rehabilitation in the neighborhoods that need it most. And then collapsing the number type of zoning districts where suitable. The city of Monroe's zoning ordinance broadly defines residential by lot size and it's all split up into distinct districts. You know, collapsing those zoning districts really smooths things out administratively. Facilitates housing construction without a whole lot of text changes. And then lastly, it's a little bit nuanced, and this was just a recommendation that came up this year from the State Planning Association. But switching enforcement actions from criminal violations to civil infractions. And there are certain constitutional steps that need to be taken when it's a criminal violation versus a civil violation. It gives communities a little bit more latitude and enforcement in collecting evidence if it's a civil infraction rather than a criminal infraction. And that was a recommendation that came from the Michigan Planning Association. After a couple of communities were caught up in extensive litigation over their criminal infractions for. Enforcement specifically around housing and property conditions. And so switching that to civil will protect the city a little bit more from a liability perspective, but also make enforcement. And information collection a little bit easier. I know I just threw a lot at you really quickly, and I'll give you a moment to digest it. But I just wanted to get your initial reactions, were there anything that I just covered? With these zoning changes that you thought, yes, you know, we've been talking about this for a couple of years, let's do it tomorrow. Or maybe some things we need to go back and look at and you think, you know, this might have worked elsewhere, but Monroe might not be the place. And again, I know there was a lot of information that I threw at you pretty quickly, but. Catching your initial reactions would really help us and help the team.
Kelly.
Yes, thank you. When you speak about the allowing for accessory dwelling, you talked about already. Constructed units like garage. Did you have any opinion on new builds on accessory or accessory dwelling?
Yeah, it can be both, it can be both either building a smaller. A structure either attached or detached to an existing structure or converting an already built structure. The challenge with new construction, especially if you're, you know, building a garage and you want to convert it into an ADU. Is that you have to build it to residential building standards, so. If you were to go out on your property and build a garage right now, it wouldn't meet residential standards. It wouldn't meet the standards for an actual dwelling unit. And so new construction can be a little bit challenging to work that into the process, it can get a little bit more expensive than maybe the intended outcome. It's a little bit cheaper to convert something that's already existing rather than building new. But both certainly work with the ADU recommendation.
I was thinking about this boom in the tiny house industry. So that's why I asked that, if you have an extra large lot. You know, could you build a second? That's something I'm interested in and hope we get to look into that more.
Yeah, most ADU recommendations have limitations on size. A common use is it can be no more than forty percent of the principal structure. Or eight hundred feet, whichever is smaller. So there are limitations on size for, I guess if you want to add that to your language. But commonly, there are limitations on size for accessory structures and accessory dwelling units. Targeting more of that tiny home, that smaller scale living opportunities. You know, you'll often see those used for family members who want to maintain some independence in their later years. But I need someone around to support them, maybe drive them to their doctor's appointments, just check in on them every once in a while. But aren't quite ready to transition to supportive care or long-term care and still want to maintain some of that independence. As we think about our community members getting older, you know, Commissioner, excuse me, Councilperson Germani, I heard you mention that today. And Mayor Clark, how can we provide housing options that support our aging community? And still acknowledge that there are a lot of independence for our seniors, you know, seniors want to maintain their lifestyle. Their independence, their mobility, and so providing housing for all stages of someone's life all the way up until end of life care.
Your Honor.
Yes.
With our neighborhood enterprise zone. I know Matt and Mark, we're, we're looking to market them, promote them more. But like I know on our neighborhood enterprise zone west. Two family structures. The goal of that was to try to get away from. Taking the one house and making it into a multi, I guess we've reached a point. Years since we've made the NEZ that we need to reconsider that. But that NEZ West would go directly against some of these recommendations.
Yeah, not all of these recommendations are appropriate for every area of the community and every neighborhood. It's kind of tailoring the recommendations to where they work in the neighborhoods that they work for. You know, staff I think has a really good handle on how these recommendations fit in with what you already have in place and what neighborhoods these would work in. Especially with older historic neighborhoods, there's concern about too many being converted and losing a lot of that. Initial character and function of the neighborhood. So you can build in limitations to these requirements, you know, only saying you can convert. One house every five thousand feet along the street or things like that, you know, there are provisions that you can add to. Try to mitigate some, some negative outcomes, but you know, the goal is to provide more housing, provide more housing options, increase availability. And again, this is kind of us throwing the kitchen sink at you. And knowing that all of these might not be appropriate and might not all work. But we wanted to, to show you everything and let you kind of tailor down from there.
Other questions? Yes, sir. So in looking at these, I think the takeaways generally are to reduce barriers and permit more and more varied housing types. There's a lot of things that, that allude to simplicity. Of the regulations and the zoning policy specifically, and then of course, this gets to density, which I think really matches. A lot of what we're trying to do, and then that density in turn, especially if you're going vertical, is going to. Be realized in terms of revenue from increased property values. I think I'm in favor of all of the zoning change, the proposed zoning changes that you have up, except perhaps. The increasing allowances for converting large historic homes. And I think that was, that point was already raised. In my experience, I've had friends that lived in units like that in college towns and I just think they have a tendency to not be well maintained. Either by the landlords and then the tenants, of course, having no property interest have no incentive to maintain them themselves. So I, I would be opposed to that, I think I'm entirely in favor of the. More various missing middle kind of multi-unit dwellings, but I think that those should probably be purpose-built. But those would be my opinions.
In communities that have tackled this conversion question and conversion. Zoning change, it's always been a point of needed discussion and thorough discussion. Some communities have allowed it everywhere, I'll speak for the city of Grand Rapids. Because I now work with their zoning ordinance on a daily basis. So only houses that are over five thousand square feet and on major streets. Are applicable for converting from one to two or three units. Obviously, the city of Grand Rapids is a very old community and has housing unit that size. So that's the ordinance that has worked well for them. And that's just an example of, of maybe some tailoring that will reduce that unintended consequence. But again, this was the kitchen sink that we wanted to throw at you and, and it's really up to you and your planning commission to. To figure out what works well and tailor it to the needs of your community.
Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Expanding on that a little bit, where it says expand where converting large homes to multiple units is allowed. If you go back a couple of slides to the area where you're talking, yes, this right here, poor housing conditions. I would stake a bet that a good portion of those homes there are multifamily homes already. And it's been a target of ours, try to get the standards upheld. It's been tough and I think that you may find that some of those homes are exactly that, maybe not all, but a good portion of them. So, and of course, you only have basically two sections of the town right here. But I can tell you that there's a lot more where that came from where they're multifamily, so I'm not so certain that would be a good fit here. Unless, if you go back to the last slide, and if you go down to the last. Where we convert from criminal to civil. And if there's more bite in that, perhaps that might help in that situation, I don't know. But I would defer that to our legal expert to let us know exactly how that could fall out. And in helping our staff accomplish their goal of getting the blight enforced. Without having to take two years, three years, four years, whatever it takes to, to get these things done. So I'm definitely in favor of something that would help the staff to do that.
Yeah, and for your attorney's knowledge, you might be aware of where this is coming from, but it's Manton versus Long Lake One and Manton versus Long Lake Two. Which is where these recommendations played out at the Michigan Supreme Court level. And where the Michigan Association of Planning recommended that policy shift is when those court cases were adjudicated by the Michigan Supreme Court.
I think it's a good discussion though.
Thank you, that was all super valuable feedback. And the report definitely goes into a little bit more specifics on the text and where these are coming from exactly in the ordinance. Pulls, points to exactly where sections of the zoning ordinance could be improved or reworked to support all of this recommendation. And then we've touched on expanding housing choices a little bit, I've already mentioned a couple of these. But these were kind of the three prime options that we saw as potential in the city of Monroe. The first are those accessory dwelling units. They have been around for a long time, you think of carriage houses and a lot of older houses have had. Units separate from the primary structure, you know, that might have been for the really old homes, a lot of the labor that was associated with the primary dwelling. You know, support staff living in, on the property in a smaller structure off to the side. And then multiplexes are those structures that have three or four units. They still have that residential feel, they all have porches, they have driveways, and they just have three or four units. A trick I like to use is counting the mailboxes on homes as I'm driving around a community. And you'll often find that there's a lot of homes that have multiple units that you didn't realize. And design here is especially important, I'm thinking about how these multiplexes fit into the existing residential character. And those design standards you can develop and enforce through the zoning ordinance, specifically thinking about new builds. Some communities across Michigan are doing some really innovative things with a pattern book homes or. Pre-approved homes where they actually develop a set of plans for residential construction, three or four units that fits within the existing city. And essentially rubber stamps it from a permitting process and someone can go out and build it with little to no cost. You know, they don't have to do all that design, and a lot of that is focused on providing more options for the three and four units. And then cottage courts, these are, it's a residential development style. That looks at how land is used in relationship to the yard requirements and space devoted for individual homes. It's often several single family homes situated around a common open space or a courtyard, like you can see in that photo. It's a really efficient way of providing a lot of housing units and less land and still providing that common open space. Often you see these run by a nonprofit or a community group that specifically targets one demographic or one population. Thinking about age and place structures, a lot of these are popping up with facilities that are providing. A transition point of care for older individuals, going from independent to supportive to end of life care. And this is kind of a common residential development style for those types of organizations and healthcare. But it's also a really popular option for people looking to buy starter homes. Because you don't have the high land costs associated with a new single family home, because that's kind of shared across the entire development. And then transitioning into what are the opportunities? So as I think Councilmember Littlemore mentioned, Monroe is a developed community. There's not a lot of land available for residential development. And developed communities, land that is available is either subprime or has other challenges associated with it. All the easy developable land has already been built on. So looking at those key areas for infill development and redevelopment are pretty key when incentivizing new housing. So we sat down, city staff gave us some really good recommendations. On potential redevelopment sites in the community, we identified, I think, eighteen, nineteen, twenty sites across the entire city. Marked there by the letter and the color orange, I won't go through them each individually. The report does a really nice job of identifying those locations and talking about what development might be appropriate for all of those. And again, this is thinking about what is potentially every single opportunity for redevelopment in the community. All of these have their associated challenges and benefits with them. But this was again, to provide a really strong base and foundation for, for what are all of the opportunities. Looking at all of the redevelopment sites, we calculated if all of them were to be developed at their highest and best use for residential. Development, there's a potential to add roughly twenty two hundred new housing units to the city. This is way, way up there, showing you what the potential is, acknowledging that the reality is going to be lower than that. But that's, if all of these sites were to be redeveloped with housing, that's the number that would be added.
For reference, we have sixty eight hundred homes.
I believe so, I can pull that exact number.
That ballpark.
Yeah. Eight thousand?
Eight thousand, okay.
Thanks, Mark. And so looking at what are the potential reinvestment strategies to make our neighborhoods and our city stronger and in turn support. The housing stock and new housing development, so looking at the key redevelopment of Monroe Public School properties. As schools transition, some school facilities are phased out. Or become, you know, non-educational or institutional, are there opportunities to use that land for residential development? And then also looking at city-owned properties, are there opportunities to convert city-owned property to residential development? Both of these strategies are seen as really excellent because there's a low acquisition cost in the land, especially for city-owned properties. And those properties are already controlled by the city, and so there's not a cost to actually go out and acquire that land. It can be worked with, with a developer, sold to a developer for residential housing construction. The city has a lot of influence and control over how that land is used, has a lot of influence over what that housing eventually looks like. So kind of partnering these two strategies is a really good way to. Develop housing that specifically meets the city's needs as opposed to letting the private market take care of everything. And the city has influence over these, on this type of land, so strategically leveraging it to meet the housing options. And then what are the advantages and challenges as we look forward to identifying opportunities? And implementing the housing goals and strategies. So Monroe remains a relatively affordable place to live with diverse housing options as compared to its neighbors. There's a lot of. Less expensive, more affordable housing options in the city compared to the townships. But the older housing stock has quality challenges associated with it. A lot of the naturally occurring affordable housing, by that I mean the older housing stock. Housing that has transitioned through multiple ownership often tends to be in a poor state of condition and has quality challenges along, along with it. And then Monroe is well positioned between two major metropolitan statistical areas, which are population centers. Which has allowed overall population and demand for homeownership to remain steady. The population is aging and those looking to remain in Monroe. The population is aging, and those looking to remain in Monroe will often stay in their home, single family homes longer simply because there aren't smaller options available to them. And this withholds supply in the housing market and kind of constrains the the amount of housing that is circulating between individuals. Monroe boasts a walkable downtown core that can handle mixed use development. There has been a struggle to support businesses in the downtown core, and potential new residents are likely to consider quality of life and walkability when making housing choices. Monroe has a competent, helpful city staff and relatively easy permitting and development process. That's something we heard over and over again when we did stakeholder interviews with those working in the housing market, developers, real estate agents. We interviewed about five of those individuals at the start of this process to really understand an outside perspective on the housing market and the development process. But this information is often only known to those who have experience working with the city. So new developers or people who might be suitable to develop in the city don't really know that the city staff is great to work with. So how can we market that as a really good element of the city and point to a healthy development environment? Something we also looked at in this report is the taxable value per square foot of all residential properties. The higher the bar and the brighter the color, the higher the taxable square foot taxable value per square foot of residential properties. So that shows you the residential properties that are returning the most in tax value per square footage. Often you see these highest around the downtown core, but you can actually see in this analysis that the highest. Neighborhoods are those on the north side of the river and on the eastern side of the city as opposed to the downtown core. And so this, you know, is helpful to understanding what are the factors that influence taxable value and in turn tax revenue. If you think back to that market analysis I touched on previously, this really correlates strongly with all of those market conditions. I'll give you a minute to digest all of that information and talk a little bit more about it in a second. And this really, really tall bar, you can see, you might be wondering what that is. Because it's calculated per square foot, that's a really, really small parcel that has like ten thousand dollars worth of tax revenue. But because it's so small, the taxable value per square foot is so high, that's why it shoots up above everything else. Does anything jump out to you as you're looking at this map and how it relates to to tax revenue and how maybe city policy or investment has influenced this?
Did you guys only generate this for residential districts in the city?
Yes, this is only residential property.
Would we have the capability for generating this in terms of tax revenue throughout the entire city?
Yeah, I can hand that math equation over to city staff and they can run it with the assessing department.
That would be, that'd be a really cool thing to see. The numbers, because I mean, this is generated, obviously, because you have a spreadsheet behind this telling you what to do. Seeing the numbers too would be pretty amazing because I think that residential property taxes are less than fifty percent of total property tax revenue, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I've done this analysis probably in about ten different communities across the state of Michigan. And what I'm about ninety percent confident you're going to see is that the downtown properties, the mixed use properties are going to generate the highest return on taxable value per square footage. And those properties aren't the ones that have the highest taxable values. The properties that have the highest taxable values are heavy industry and large commercial centers, but they require such a large footprint and a lot of space that it's a fiscally inefficient use of land because they're so large. And so although they have high taxable values, they have a lot of space to go along with them. And so striking that balance between providing those services and and planning fiscally with land uses is something that I think is really valuable for you as elected officials to consider. Moving into kind of what are the summary goals that the report identified? So the first was to provide opportunities for homeowners or new buyers to make necessary repairs to buildings in poor condition. Second, encourage the development and financing of smaller homes, including single family and medium density typologies such as townhomes and duplexes. Third, focus on modest increases in density around the downtown core, those areas of the city that have high amenities, high placemaking assets, those areas of the city that are have all of that livability where younger people and people who are looking to relocate want to live. And then how does this transition into strategies? You know, broadly, the four strategies are preservation, so protecting older neighborhoods using local historic districts, revitalizing neighborhoods using the Neighborhood Improvement Act. And specifically looking at Census Track three twenty one, and there's a map of that in the report. Transformation, applying incentives, brownfields, the neighborhood enterprise zones that councilperson Vining mentioned to transform transform vacant properties into housing and and sources of added taxable valuation. And then the adaptive reuse of specific properties, utilizing historic tax credits, MEDC and Mishta funding to adaptively reuse specifically the St. Mary's Academy Building for residential. Again, that's just a strategy that's identified in the report. As you'll kind of work on them over the coming years, you'll find some of them are a little bit more viable than others. But this is again intended to throw everything at you so you have a lot of tools at your disposal to achieve your desired outcomes. And what are the key programs to achieve these goals? One, historic preservation. Two, the Neighborhood Improvement Act. Three, the Residential Housing Facilities Act. Four, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Five, the Neighborhood Enterprise Zones. Six, the Community Development Block Grant. Seven, the Capital Improvement Program. And the neighbor and the report goes into how these tools are used and where they can be used in the city to support their goals. It's a lot of information that I couldn't fit on this one slide. So when you see the report, it'll outline all of that, along with timelines for achieving all of the action items and responsible parties. The action items are focused in a five year time period. So after five years is up, you can reevaluate all of the strategies, identify the ones that worked, identify the ones that didn't work or that you didn't have time to get to and plan for the next five years. With that, thank you for inviting me and we have, oh, I ran a little over time, apologies, seven minutes to take questions. And I'm happy to comment anything that I went over tonight or any additional information in the report. I believe that'll be sent out to you shortly for your full review. But I wanted to introduce it to you first before I sent you a hundred page document to sort through on your own.
Questions for Rowan, the councilmembers? Seems to be quiet. Also, thanks for the presentation information. I see some things that are, I'll say, similar to are currently used, some things that are not, some discussions have passed, and things that we've talked that need to move forward in action from the type of programs that you're discussing.
Yeah, thank you. And if you're reading through the report at home on your leisure time and have a question, feel free to shoot it over to Mark and Matt, and they know how to get ahold of me and I can answer that. And if I don't know it, I can kick it to the broader team and get that question answered for you. So both the Beckett and Rader team and the CARP Strategies team are available to answer questions as you have time to digest and, you know, really look through the report in detail.
Very good. Kelly?
In in this report, do you offer any direction as to pathways to homeownership for renters?
Yeah, the the end of the report has a big table of specific programs and strategies outlined. And I believe three to five of those touch on pathways to homeownership for renters. I don't know them exactly off the top of my head, but that's definitely in the report.
Andrew?
Yes. How much of the residential zoning in the city is currently single family detached housing?
Great question.
Because we keep talking about multi use and missing middle and mixed use and all this other good stuff. And it's does our zoning policy currently allow it, or is that one of the things that we're going to have to look at?
Yeah, I know it's in here somewhere. It might take me a minute to find, I can follow up with you.
Numbers in the report, though?
I believe so.
And you'll be sending it out, I'll find it, don't worry about it. Something else I'd like to discuss is we talk about people transitioning more into hybrid and remote work. People are having more flexibility in where they live than they ever have before that's disconnected from where they're working. And I think this allows us, as the report details, to take advantage of certain opportunities that are present in the in the city of Monroe that may not be present even in places as nearby as some of the townships in the county. The inflation of homes has gone up less, and we started from a lower point to begin with. If you're looking for affordable housing in Monroe County, the city probably is going to be your best bet. And so if you make a fairly maintained housing stock and we are able to connect amenities and and implement placemaking aspects into the into the neighborhoods and communities of the city, then I think that we can make some very attractive neighborhoods and and bring some new people in. And that includes connections to nonmotorized transportation systems. It doesn't just include bike lanes along the roads, but independent trail systems that connect your residential areas with your commercial corridors and also utilizing blue water trails as well. And then, of course, we can talk about amenities like parks. But as we develop these new neighborhoods, let's not forget the to sufficiently stock them with the proper amenities that are that are going to make those houses attractive. Because I doubt the school system is gonna is gonna look to to put up some new properties for us. That's kind of on us to to accomplish. But that's something that I want to keep in mind and and I'd like to keep in the back of our heads as as we proceed with this report.
Yeah, absolutely.
Something may that is sort of connected to the housing strategy but is not in the housing strategy, and I don't expect to find in the housing strategy. And I'm looking for Director Lewis, but I don't see him tonight. When we were campaigning for the road millage, I believe that there was a claim, I'm saying this more to to the city staff and administration to you, if you'll indulge me. The the claim was made that we don't have the funding to maintain the infrastructure at the rate that it's decaying without the millage. I'm wondering what happens then when the millage goes away and we're back to where we were initially in terms of having to maintain our roads and utility lines and other infrastructure with the same tax base that we had to start with that we struggled before the millage passed. And I think that the strategies that you're employing in terms of prioritizing density and building vertically and doing multi use is is not only going to make our downtown and businesses more vibrant and provide them with a with a deeper customer base. It's not only going to make our community nicer and a more vibrant place to live in, but it's also going to help maintain the infrastructure that it takes to run those neighborhoods. The the trash collection and the the laying asphalt and repairing roads and and all the other stuff that goes with that. So I'm I like that we are that we are pursuing density. I think it's a more sustainable strategy in the long term because it seems to me that without the road millage, our current funding levels were not sustainable with the infrastructure burden that we had. So I'm I think generally I'm very, very excited to get started on our housing discussion going forward. I think this is a very important discussion for the city to have, and it's going to impact our future in a great way. So I'm, thank you, thank you for the report. I think it's going to provide us with some very valuable insights.
Other comments? Mark?
Well, nice job, Rowan. So to give council a background and a reminder, when we first started this project with Beckett and Rader and the other proposals we received, one of two of the strengths that Beckett and Rader brought to the table was their proposal included the existing conditions analysis. Because it was very important from the feedback and the support that we've had from council over the past several years and increasing some of our enforcement and updating our ordinances. It's not just about new development, but it's about strengthening the development that we have. And so the existing conditions analysis and the existing review that Beckett and Rader has in this report was very insightful and very helpful. The other part that was attractive with Beckett and Raiders, they were very familiar with all the resources that are available on the state level to incentivize and assist with new residential development and housing improvement. And so when you get the report and you review that, you're going to see, Rowan mentioned it, there is a huge chart about all the different programs and resources that are available. And so, you know, when we met with them to review the draft report, we got exactly what we wanted out of the report, and I think that you'll find that too. I want to thank Matt for leading this project forward, working with Beckett and Rader and being the point person. And all of our staff, including our GIS staff, who helped get a lot of information to Beckett and Rader to make those maps and make those charts and get the information. You know, the conversation is very relevant. I think over the past several weeks, a lot of things have happened that are already putting in place the implementation strategy that's laid out in the plan. Very pleased to inform council that on Friday, we got word from Mishta that we received a fifty thousand dollar grant that you supported and allowed us to submit. And that's going to be used to update our zoning code to make residential more feasible in the city in many different ways. And so the zoning recommendations that Rowan had outlined on that presentation, we're going to start looking at those. And he's right, a lot of these were blanket opportunities for us. And when we when we discussed the draft report, the next step is going to be review each of those and see how applicable they are to each neighborhood. Because if we make a blatant statement policy, we have to look at how it's going to impact neighborhoods across the entire city. So we have to make sure and really give a lot of scrutiny and have a lot of thorough, good discussion with the planning commission, with city council as we seek to review and implement some of these policies. So the other, I want to say, related to the public policy slide and the hindrances to development. It's a hard look at ourself, and I appreciate Beckett and Rader giving us a realistic outsider perspective in terms of what the city and others have done that may prohibit residential housing. But when you read the report, there's also a lot of great work that's being done. When we talk about the downtown, city council has adopted a lot of policy and put a lot of resources into investing in our downtown. And the report does highlight some of those improvements that we've made. In terms of education, we've we've got a really good relationship with our school partners, whether that's the parochial schools, Monroe Public, and any of the others. And there is a lot of great work that's being done that's worth celebrating and worth highlighting on why you should live in Monroe and the great educational opportunities that we have there. And I'm grateful that Beckett and Rader gave a holistic perspective to each of these items for us to review. And it's up to us to get the word out there on those items. And so related to next steps, so city council this evening, this was a very broad overview. I think when you get the the hundred and some page document, we want you to take the time to give it a thorough review. Certainly, there's a lot to go over. If you're if you're like us, this is, I told Matt, this has been a crescendo for a couple of years. We've been talking about this with city council, and it's great to actually have the meat in the hands. I think we were pretty much salivating to see the final report and see what was going to be in it. And I I know council has anticipated as well. So we're going to send that out tomorrow, and it's also going to be posted on the website in the presentation this evening. And so we want you to take the time to review it, and that's going to lay the groundwork for a lot of important discussions to come. I think what we've committed and what we've asked with city council is that this be the start of conversations. Certainly, we're not going to have twenty two hundred new units built in the next year across the city. But we've got a foundation of a lot of recommendations that CARP and Beckett and Rader and staff have laid out that now we have to start talking about how we're going to prioritize them. Where do you want us to begin? What is the low hanging fruit that we can tackle right away? I think one of them was answered with receiving fifty thousand dollars on Friday started addressing the zoning challenges. But some of the discussions, you know, the relevance of it, I'm not going to lie, I think it's ironic. Matt and I met last week with a developer who wants to put about thirty six new townhomes in the city on on one parcel. So we're talking about some of the zoning challenges, the setbacks, and we said, well, hang on, we're going to be addressing that. Walking in this evening, I got a message from a friend of mine. Her parents own a very large old historic home in the city. And she said, hey, tell me about those lazy boy properties because they're looking to sell that house and downsize, but they can't find the right thing in Monroe. So the need is definitely there. And, you know, the message is we're working with everybody to try and address those and and meet all the needs across the city. And so when we when we think about the next steps, obviously, give a couple of weeks to review the document. Send your feedback to to me and Dave. Let us know what your thoughts were, any questions that you have, so that we can come prepared to the next work session and start actually. prepared to the next work session and start actually digging into what you read, what the recommendations and the findings were, and we look forward to that discussion as well. The other relevance tonight on the council agenda, you'll see requests to submit a grant to the National Park Service for $750,000. They've got a grant program called the Paul Brun Grant, which allows the city to have a sub-grant program to make sub-grants to property owners that have properties listed on the national register that's most of the downtown, and we can make grants to help rehabilitate and preserve some of those buildings. And so we're looking at some of the hindrances to downtown that Rowan was talking about. This will allow us to provide some pretty significant grants to property owners to help facilitate improving some of these buildings that need the love and the attention. The other, we did have a meeting today with the IHM Sisters related to the future of St. Mary's Academy and how we can work together. The city manager pointed out the residential housing strategy that we were talking about tonight, and the sisters were very gracious, and they said, well, we've got property that can possibly help fulfill some of those needs, so how can we work together on that? It's, like I said, it's just ironic how relevant this conversation is in light of all the work that's already going on that's addressing the strategy.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Andy Robinson, anything further this evening?
I don't think we have anything further unless you have any more questions regarding the housing strategy that was presented tonight.
Any questions for administration or other comments preparation for later? I'll save it so I don't forget. I noticed on our agenda, I kind of went right to the work session and the public comment time. I know we have some, if there's any, I can say, comments at this time. Obviously, this is the work session, the council meeting will start at 7:30. If there's an item on that agenda or desire to speak at that point, or actually both if you wish to do so. So I'll make sure that we take any public comments from those present here this evening. Any comments for the work session? If not, we obviously have public comment at the close of the council meeting as well and those agenda items. Yes, sir. If you want to come up, please just state your name and jurisdiction of residence and then your comment.
My name's Simon Cox, and I don't know, this is the first time being in a meeting like this, so not sure if it's something to bring up now or later, but it's...
Either way.
Sorry?
Either way, go ahead.
Okay, sounds good. Just purchased a property on Third Street for the purpose of rehabbing and selling, and there's a city building that encroaches the property a little bit, so I didn't know if that was something, again, to discuss now or later. One of the city representatives had met with my contractor and said it would be a good idea to come today and get the conversation started, so...
Okay. So you say the city building encroaches?
Yes, it's at 229 West Third Street. Currently, it's being used as a storage facility for the museum.
Well, that'd be the county facility.
It is, okay.
Yeah, I thought that might be the one you were talking about, but wasn't sure. Sure, the county museum has a building that's on Third Street that's owned, it's a county property. Obviously, it is in the city, though, but as far as the ownership, it's with the county. So those are conversations that obviously you'll have with the county, but you can have them here as well with ours, because when it comes down to any type of action that would come back through the city. So you're probably in the right place, and also the second-right place you'll want to be also with the museum. But I'll tell you, Simon, if you want, the city manager, make sure he gets your contact information this evening, and then we'll get you either in touch with Mark or Matt and the manager, and it will help facilitate the conversation with the county on the property, so they know what property you're talking about.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, so make sure you see him before you depart. And you're welcome to stay for the council meeting as well.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment for the work session? There's nothing further? Then we'll have some time for preparation for the council meeting. Very well, and we'll adjourn to the city council work session. Thank you.
Call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Here.
Germaine?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Hader?
Present.
Stillgrave?
Excused.
Mayor Clark?
Present. I'd ask that we all please rise for the indication, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
We have faith and hope in each other in our city. We ask for your guidance in the decisions that are made here. We ask you to help us work for the welfare of this community and all call it home.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, next item, please.
Item is the approval of the regular agenda.
Thank you. City Manager Robinson, any amendments or changes to the agenda?
Amendments or changes to the agenda tonight.
Seeing that, Councilman Lemoore?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilman Felder, to approve the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yep.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments, the amount should read one million, sixty thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. One zero six zero, one nine seven point three eight.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda council members wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda that members or those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? I see we have a few new people that haven't seen for a while, but so is the consent agenda. All these items will be passed in a single vote unless it's pulled for further discussion. So the items that appear under the consent agenda is what we're asking. So are there any items on the consent agenda those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, a motion would be in order. Councilman Felder?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file recommendations carried out, resolutions adopted. Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Hader, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file recommendations carried out, resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is under Presentations, Communications, and Public Hearings, item four five six two, Police Officer and Firefighter of the Year Presentation.
Thank you. City Manager Robinson?
Yes, Your Honor, and council, it's my honor. I'd like to call up our Department of Public Safety Chad Tolstead in order to recognize the symbols of what every firefighter and police officer represents in the city as they keep us safe. And it's a very special day for the officers and firefighters that was selected today. And it's great to see the support of family as well as their colleagues on this very special day.
Thank you. Director Tolstead?
I'm a mayor, City Council members, Chad Tolstead, Director of Public Safety. It is a special night tonight to be able to honor two members from our department that have shown outstanding work in 2023. It's always an honor to speak to council, but it's especially honored tonight to be able to come forth with what we have tonight. Tonight, we recognize two city employees that demonstrate what it means to serve. The direction of the department which we set out for three years ago was to build upon what we have set in place here on two honorable professions. When the bell sounds, these men and women answer. They put aside whatever they have going on within themselves or going on in their lives to answer their call for service for the citizens that are in need here in the city of Monroe. Working as a police officer or firefighter is some of the most selfless work I think you can do for a profession, although I am very biased in that manner. While tonight the focus is on our Firefighter of the Year, James Hubert, and Police Officer of the Year, Peyton Smithers. I'd like to recognize some of the other members we have here. You see the support in which we show these two individuals from the officers that are here present here tonight and the firefighters here who are present here tonight. I'm thankful for their presence here. These are two examples of what the city is proud to hold up as examples of what we have as police officers and firefighters. That these are not exceptions to the rules, but outstanding officers for 2023. I'd like to ask Commander Lindsey and Officer Smithers to join me up here at the podium. Before we talk about Officer Smithers, he gave me like five pages to read from. But before we get started on Officer Smithers here, I'd like to recognize Commander Lindsey and recognize my appreciation for his leadership on the department and the daily operations in which he runs day to day. So thank you, Derek. Officer Smithers grew up here in the city of Monroe. He began with us at our cadet program. How old were you when you started?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one years old? And you've been with us here now six years?
Yeah, almost seven.
As a sworn officer. Officer Smithers was nominated by multiple command officers and by within his own ranks, which is always one of the highest compliments you can receive to be nominated for an award such as this by members within your own rank. I'll give you some highlights of some of the reasons why he was. He captured an armed robbery suspect. He also went into and arrested a man with a warrant who also was, when they found out and the fight was over, had a loaded handgun in his waistband. Most notably was a home invasion that had occurred in the city of Monroe where firearms were stolen. One night, Officer Smithers heard the gunfire going off as these two who stole the guns out of a home were shooting them off in our city. He coordinated with his fellow officers and was able to take them all into custody without incident. If that's not enough for his daily duties, he's also a part of the accident investigation team, which investigates all of our serious accidents here within the city of Monroe. He is also a field training officer. Field training officer is some of the most important roles in which an officer can participate in. This is shaping the future of the department. These are examples of what we want our officers to be like in within the future. So Officer Smithers quietly, confidently, and humbly carries out his duties on a day in and day out basis. And we're appreciative of him being here tonight and hold him out as one of the Monroe finest has to offer. Peyton, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to thank the director for obviously the kind words and trying to lead us in the right direction. In my opinion, I think we've been doing a pretty good job. I do want to thank I want to thank all of our command staff and all of our leaders and supervisors because without them, I mean, I wouldn't have learned half of what I know. It's just been, the seven years have been a lot. I can see where I've grown. It's just been, it's just been kind of a long road and learned a lot of stuff along the way. A lot of stuff from FTOs and other officers, and I do want to thank specifically Lieutenant Clayton, Lieutenant Marks, and Corporal Winner for nominating me. And there's been plenty of other people that deserve it as well. It's kind of all one-team mentality around here, so I like to keep that. And rarely, there's a lot of stuff done solo. Everybody needs help. And I like to think that we operate pretty well as a team, so I just want to thank all the other officers that aren't here that did help me along the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be in trouble if I did not thank my girlfriend who couldn't be here today, but she has also been very supportive of me in all the extra hours and weird hours I have to work, so thank you.
Thanks. Good job. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
I'd ask, uh? I'd ask Commander Smiley and Firefighter Hubert now join me. I too would like to take just a quick moment and recognize Commander Smiley and for the work he's done within the fire division of the Public Safety Department. I lean on him, rely upon him, trust him, and I appreciate for your efforts, Scott. Firefighter Hubert, he did not give me a whole five pages like Peyton Smithers did. But James Hubert came to us about two years ago, which is not a lot of tenure on a department. But he came in as an experienced firefighter. He came in as an experienced paramedic, eighteen years as a paramedic. Is that correct? He was nominated by his command staff and supported by all his firefighters. He's a standout, and this is one of the things that was really was, and when you talk about James Hubert and the people who would talk about him will say he's a standout here on medical scenes. This is the kind of paramedic, all of our paramedics are excellent, but James is the kind of paramedic you want treating your family. And if somebody was hurt that you loved or you needed care, James is the kind of person that you want, not just for his technical skills, but for the care and compassion in which he shows to patients and he serves. Scott and I knew we were headed in a right direction here with this department. I think James was one of my first hires when I took this job as director. And I knew if we could get a quality candidate like James to come on board, we were absolutely headed in a great direction. So again, you'll see another candidate up here that's winning this Employee of the Year for us as a department. Again, quietly, confidently, and humbly carries out his duties on a day in and day out basis. Congratulations.
Thank you. Honorable mayor, council, I wanted to say thank you again, Director Tolstead, and to Commander Smiley, especially Commander Smiley for fielding the phone calls to recruit me. I'd also like to thank the shift that I work on, sea shift, Captain Little, and everybody at Monroe City Fire Department. They've been a big part of the professional that I'm able to be. I'd also like to thank my wife. Without her, everything would fall apart for me. They say, they're saying that if you're the smartest one in the room, you're in the wrong room. And it's like that, that applies to me when I come to work. Every time I come, I learn something new about my craft and the professional that I want to be, and I'm very fortunate for that. Being awarded for Firefighter of the Year is as simple as trying to uphold the standards by the professionals that it work with and the fire service itself. And after twenty years of being in the, as a first responder, I'm honored to have found a home at Monroe City Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
So mayor, honourable council, honourable mayor, city council members. What we have set out here to deliver emergency services to highest level possible. These two men embody what we have set out to do and are finance examples of what Monroe has to offer, not only in the Public Safety Department, but as a city as a whole. I'm proud of them. I know you're proud of them, and the citizens of Monroe can be proud of them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. If they're going to be departing, but if they're going to be departing, then we have some opportunities to congratulate and recognize firefighter Hubert and also police officer Smithers before they depart. I'm sure they probably are with family, but also have other, may even have activities or duties this evening at work. So our congratulations on behalf of the city council. And I'm sure we'll have opportunities to meet with them as well, so thank you. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item four five five one, public hearing on proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two, and there are no comments on file in the clerk treasurer's office.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing regarding proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two regarding, to amend section five two four regarding off-street parking and loading. Are there any comments of those present here this evening for this public hearing? Any comments on this public hearing to this topic? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item four five zero two, proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two, an update to the zoning ordinance to update section five point two four of off-street parking and loading and section seven up for its final reading.
Thank you. City Manager Robinson, any comments or introductions, additional ones? We've had a work session a while ago. There's some, if there's anything additional or there's questions from council?
Yes, Your Honor, what, taking into account the input of council and it's very important, this ordinance update with both the off-street parking and loading and as well as the recreational vehicle parking and storage. I think we, after, this is the second reading, and it's our ask that we, that you adopt this ordinance and put it into operation.
Thank you. Any comments from council regarding the ordinance? Before I see Councilman Lemoore has his finger up, any other comments? I'll say I want to thank the staff for the time regarding this. We've had quite a bit of conversation over the past year, actually, as we were looking for the timing also as well as the discussion, and I appreciate the, taking some of the direction and, I'll say, comments and the hard work done by the staff to present this that's before us now. I'm certain we are sure we'll continue to get calls regarding this, but then this is the start point. And I think this is a point where we can start and then kind of measure those calls of are they, is further that's needed. But I appreciate where we are today with the, I'll say what's before us, but also the timeframes as we go forward. So that's all my only comments, and if there's no further comments, Councilman Lemoore?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to place proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two on the floor for its final reading.
It's a motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilman Vining on item, I'm sorry, forty-five oh two, proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two. Clerk?
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-four dash zero zero two, chapter seven two zero zoning, and ordinance to amend section five point two four. Ordinance 24-002, Chapter 720, Zoning, and Ordinance to Amend Section 5.24, Off-Street Parking and Loading, and Section 7.02, Definitions, Recreational Vehicle of the Code of the City of Monroe. The City of Monroe ordains.
Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 4563, Agreement with Manikin Smith Group for St. Mary's Park Project.
Your Honor and Council, I'd like to invite our parks director, Brad Willey, to present for discussion this agreement for the St. Mary's Park Project.
Thank you. Welcome.
Counsel, for those of you who don't know me, park supervisor Brad Willey. For the city of Monroe, I'm here tonight to introduce, for your approval, the proposal in regards to the St. Mary's Park redevelopment project. The project was budgeted through the CIP fund, and if approved, will include a schematic design, design development, and construction documents, all put together by Manikin Smith. At this time, the primary goals of the redevelopment are to reclaim the park's relationship with the riverfront, evaluate and refurbish park amenities, including the amphitheater, and improve pedestrian circulation and accessibility through the parking lot and the parking, the park itself. The project will be very schematic-heavy, as tests, soil borings, and court evals, along with environmental permitting, will be needed by professional services before any recommendations are given. So these recommendations will then guide the design process. So here's what we do know. The park is already geared towards a special event, so we want to improve these experiences for our citizens. There is a floodway that limits where we can and can't locate certain amenities and buildings, so we are limited by that. The parking lot will be the main, will be a main focus of the new park redevelopment. The intent is to keep the bandshell where it is. The intent is also to evaluate the basketball and tennis ball, tennis courts, but we don't know to what extent until everything is done. We know, now because of that, the design development phase, we do know will increase depending on all the recommendations. And finally, once the schematic phase is complete, the professional recommendations will be used to create a site plan that will be taken before the planning commission, and then develop the plans to put the project out for bid 2025 for construction. And that's it.
Okay. Well, hold on Brad, we'll see if there's any questions from council. Councilman Lomore?
Thank you, Your Honor. Brad, I know on the, I know there hasn't been any final judgment on the plans yet, but I do know that the basketball court is heavily used. And I really don't want to take that away, because I know a lot of kids, whether they're coming from east, west, wherever, they meet there. It was like their meeting point. So it's something that I think is, is an integral part to that park on a daily basis. I know that obviously because I live very close and I hear them.
Yes.
And I don't want to take that away, and I think it's a really good thing to have for them. Another thing, and this is kind of a cart before the horse type of thing, and I discussed with the city manager earlier, was the crosswalk out front from the neighborhoods into the park. I think it's totally ignored. Drivers nearly hit people as they're going across the crosswalk frequently. I see that all the time. And I think we need to figure something out with that before we make this eye-opening appearance over there to attract younger generations to come over to the park. It's just something I think that needs to be considered when we do the improvements to the park.
Thank you. Other comments from council members? Obviously, this is before us this evening is about the contract award with Manikin Smith Group for the design and construction management activities, but now is also time to provide some additional information for Brad to see if this passes with them as well. Councilman Felder?
Thank you, Your Honor. To follow up on Councilman Lomore's point regarding the design aspects, I know we've gone back and forth on the design for this park in the past. Will we have a chance to review that and do we have an estimate on when that might be?
Yeah, I'm, estimate-wise, I'm not really positive on. Like I said, once the feasibility studies are done, it'll go before the planning commission. Planning commission will kind of make the design from that point, and then from that point, I'm assuming that it's going to come up before you guys, before we do anything else as far as that goes, but I don't have a timeline.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Some prior initial proposals for the park included a lot of topographical work. Are the soil borings being utilized for that purpose?
Yes, yeah, because there's a bunch of things we'd like to do, we just don't know what we can do. So that's, that's the reason behind those.
I look forward to seeing the design.
Councilman Vining?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm excited. It seems like forever since we did that master park plan and to see the parks developing is exciting. I just want to echo what Councilman Lomore said about the basketball, because, you know, we went through this at Father Carnes Park. So, you know, I think basketball is an important outdoor sport for the young people, so I think it's important that you try your best to keep that there. And not to go backwards, but I'm still hoping we can figure something out of Father's Carnes, because that was another heavily-used basketball court for generations that's not there anymore. So I know there are some options that Mark showed me, temporary, well, flexible courts and things like that. So take you back to that one, maybe there's something we can still do about it.
Again, I think the intent is going to be to keep those courts, you know what I mean? It's just to what extent is the renovation going to be? And that's another reason the soil boring is there too. We don't just want to fix it, we want to fix it right. So we want to make sure that we don't, it's not just throwing a lift or a top on it. If we have to go down a little deeper, we might have to go down a little deeper, we just don't know yet.
And we don't get you here often, so I just want to say thanks. You guys do a great job keeping the parks together, and I appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Other comments? I guess I'll, Brad, again, I appreciate the presentation and being here as well. You know, when we have these type of concept plans that come through, that's exactly what it is, and it's a start point. So I don't want people to take, that might be viewing this after the presentation this evening to go and see, and see this rendering, that's all it is. It's an idea that's a start point to have the conversation. We've heard two or three comments here already, and I think, yeah, it looks different than it currently is, but the idea is to show you what it can be and all the different attributes that may come with a kind of a facelift and revision of that, including the parking lot as well as the park. So I always say that where it comes in the end is through the work that's going to be done, and then conversation, as was already been stated, with the planning commission and council, and opportunities to have input as well. So whether something's there or not's there, or something's different there, we, this is why we have this before the council. To Councilman Vining's point as well, you know, we, it's been a few years now, we started and we had a complete review of all of our parks, and we, six were targeted for the first to be done. And two of those are done, which is Labor Park and now Carnes Park, and there's still opportunities to make those adjustments as well. And now St. Mary's in this part is to have those schematic and overlays and plans put in place, and we're already thinking about what the next one might be, because you plan those ahead so the following year you actually can implement. So I appreciate the presentation and information, and if there's no, oh, Councilman Hader?
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, somebody who grew up and spent most of their childhood at Carnes Park, and I'm old enough to remember when the Wade Pool actually worked there, you know, to see in the improvements there, I love it, and I'm really excited to see what we do at St. Mary's also. And so I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Lomore?
Yes, I have one more thing. Yeah, I really appreciate the hard work you guys do, your staff. I wanted to echo what Councilperson Vining said as well. And it's great that you're presenting, because, you know, we hear you, you're right there, you're the one that's putting pitch in the shovel and everything, so I really appreciate you being here presenting tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Lomore?
Yeah, with that, I'll make a motion that a professional services contract be awarded to Manikin Smith Group, the amount of $209,100 for design and construction management activities, plus an additional 15% contingency in the amount of $31,365 for a total amount not to exceed $240,465, and that the Director of Economic and Community Development be authorized to execute any necessary agreements on behalf of the city.
Motion by Councilman Lomore, supported by Councilman Vining. Councilwoman Germani on item 4563, Agreement with Manikin Smith Group for St. Mary's Park Project. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is?
Thank you, Brad, sorry.
The next item is 4543, Acceptance of the Mishta Neighborhood Enhancement Program Grant.
Manager Robinson?
Your Honor and Council, I'd actually like to invite Director Cochran up to the podium to be able to discuss actually the next three items for the exciting grant opportunities we are pursuing.
Mark?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Mark Cochran, Director of Economic and Community Development. I'm extremely proud of my staff that they made a successful application. Matt Vanasacker and Caitlin McBriarty are grants coordinator. We received notice that Mishta, again, awarded us another grant in the amount of $56,250 through the Neighborhood Enhancement Program. These funds will go toward improvements of owner-occupied property, specifically targeting the Orchard East neighborhood. So managed just like our fixed grant program, but through Mishta. And so tonight, what we're asking is for city council to formally accept that grant award and also authorize us to execute the necessary agreements. This is another grant fund that has no local match requirement either, so.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran? There's no questions? Councilwoman Vining?
I move to accept the Mishta NEP grant that the city manager be authorized to sign the necessary grant agreements and that the assistant city manager, finance director be authorized to amend the budget for the grant.
Second. I got two of them, so. There's a motion by Councilman Vining, supported by Councilman Hader, on item 4543, Acceptance of the Mishta Neighborhood Enhancement Program Grant. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Thank you. Director Cochran?
Yes, the next item is authorization to submit a grant that's due tomorrow. The Paul Bruin Grant Historic Revitalization Grants Program, we were made aware of this thanks to our partners at the State Historic Preservation Office, but the city in this sense is considered a rural community, and because we're a certified local government through the state of Michigan, we're eligible to apply for this one as well. Again, Amy Zerrin of my staff and also Caitlin are putting this application together. We are applying for the full $750,000 to be able to administer a sub-grant program where we will put a request for proposals out to owners of properties that are listed on the National Register or are eligible to be listed on the National Register to perform rehabilitation and preservation activities. So thinking this project, we, it's our intent to specifically target commercial properties that are within the downtown, although any eligible property would be able to apply to the city, and then city council will review the applications and then make awards and have an agreement with the sub-recipient if these funds are awarded. Again, no local match requirement required by the city, although we are submitting as part of our grant that all administrative tasks and staff time will go toward our, that will be covered by the city to administer these funds, so all $750,000 can be put toward property rehabilitation.
Any questions for Mr. Cochran? Councilwoman Germani?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion, move to grant authorization for the Economic and Community Development Department to submit the application for National Park Service Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grants Program, the city manager to sign all required documents, and the assistant city manager, finance director, to amend the budget for the grant.
Motion by Councilwoman Germani, supported by Councilman Lomore, on item 4539, the National Park Service Grant Submittal Authorization. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Director Cochran?
The final grant that we're seeking authorization to submit this evening is related to the West Elm Avenue Grade Separation Grant, the Elm Avenue CSX rail crossing on the west side of the city. You'll recall the city did receive about $23.8 million from the Department of Transportation, the U.S. Department of Transportation and Federal Railroad Administration for this project. The city has a local $6 million match requirement. It's been our intent all along to apply to the state of Michigan for support to help us meet that local match. CSX is statutorily required as well to submit, or to help us meet that local match requirement through the work that's going to be necessary by them to complete the separation. And so this is actually one of two awards, or grants, that we're looking to support, submit to the state of Michigan. This one, the state last year set up the Michigan Infrastructure Office, and the purpose of this was to support local governments in their application and provide technical assistance to be able to apply for federal funds, so to help local governments put together the application, provide them with knowledge and insight on where the funds are, how to get them. We're in the situation where we actually got the funds and we got the grant. And so the Michigan Infrastructure Office Technical Assistance Center also has a significant amount of funds, millions in funds, to assist local communities with match when they get those grants, because we know federal, federal grants often come with a burden of having to satisfy a match requirement and having, having to meet that. And so tonight, we're, we're asking for your permission to submit $2 million to the Michigan Infrastructure Office to go toward our $6 million match. The other, the state in last year's budget, the governor signed legislation author, are requiring the Michigan Department of Transportation to establish a priority rail grade separation fund. And so that is actually through the DOT, not the infrastructure office, so it's our intent, and I know several of our staff were in Lansing last week, meeting through the MML conference and meeting with our legislators to find out when that grant is going to become available and how to apply, and it's our intent to also apply for $2 million through that to assist with the local match as well.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Director Cochran? See none? Councilman Lomore?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to grant authorization for the Economic and Community Development Department to submit the application for Michigan Infrastructure Office Technical Assistance Center Grant Program. City manager to sign all required documents, and the assistant city manager, finance director, to amend the budget for the grant.
There's two. There's a motion by Councilman Lomore, supported by Councilman Hader, on item 4542, the Michigan Infrastructure Office Grant Submittal Authorization. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Clark, if I may, I want to thank my staff for their hard work in putting these applications together. Certainly, they range from simple documents to very complicated documents and they take a lot of work to gather all of the information, and we have great support from all the city departments as well who help Caitlin, Matt, and Amy put these applications together and then also running down the letters of support that are required to be submitted. And it seems like every grant on earth is due in the month of March, and so they've been very busy trying to meet these deadlines, and I just wanted to acknowledge and thank them.
Much. Clerk, next item, please.
I have no further items this evening.
Very well, it's Council Comments. It is March. Counselwoman Vining, comments this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. So first I want to say I'm excited to dig into the housing draft report. It's been a long time coming, so I know there's still a lot more work to do, but looking forward to digging into the entire report. I just wanted to congratulate Officer Smithers and firefighter Hubert again. I don't know firefighter Hubert, but Officer Smithers, I've been able to see him at work in the community, always very respectful. You know, police officers have a reputation for being a little rough around the edges, so I want to say he is very respectful, very professional from all the times I've seen him in his work. So congratulations to those gentlemen. And while we have Mark here, Mr. Cochran, I was hoping we could get an update on the library oppority center at ALCC slash Learning Bank Progress. I was thinking we were going to hear something maybe on the 15th, so.
Mark, would you like to update it? We just had a meeting with the, it was the 50% design meeting with the contractor with Kohler, and Mark, you want to update them on where we're at with that?
Yeah, exactly right. We are right on track in progress with this project. We did receive the 50% design review that we just, the committee met on Friday afternoon and reviewed that. The next step is to start meeting with the users and the stakeholders. Also, AUC is going to be starting now the pricing on the 50% design to make sure that we're on target and within budget as well, so.
Regarding that, so you say you're going to be meeting with the users and stakeholders soon. Can you give us an estimate of when council will begin to see actual design plans and things such as that?
I would think that it, you know, it's still, it's a fluid process, and as the 50% design is there, now it is kind of getting to the nuts and bolts with the end users, the Learning Bank, the library, and to really finalize, once they can see kind of a rendering or kind of design of how it's going to roll out, now is when they have to start actually doing the planning for IT drops, electrical outlets, these kind of things which are very integral that they're going to need the end users' participation in. So, once that all comes together, then they will put together an actual schematic design and drawings and all of that that will be brought forth to the council.
Yeah, I think if I, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
I think that would be a great time to do it after we've gotten all the final input, and especially after pricing as well, to make sure that this is the project that's within budget. This is what we're preparing to go out to bid for construction and showing you what the final product is for your final input.
And then, I know we did the directed spending request today, we authorized that. I know you can't always tell, but generally, is there a general timeline? We asked for it, we approved it today, so you're going to ask for it very soon here. Does that have to come out like with the state budget, or how long would you anticipate that taking to get an answer back if we were approved or not? And then if we're not approved, are we going to look into other sources to close that gap?
Yeah, so Mayor, if I may, the congressional spending request that we submitted and that you approved on tonight's agenda, a change from the last meeting, we did remove one of them in response to some of the feedback we got from our federal legislators. You'll recall the three projects we had intended to submit was the community center project to close the funding gap. The other one was the Battlefield Parkway project within the Heritage Corridor master plan, and then the other was the two-way conversion and the Monroe Street evaluation. Because it hasn't come before council, and also because two of those projects would be competing against each other out of the same account, we narrowed that list down to two to only submit the Battlefield Parkway and the Opportunity Center because they're coming on two different budgets, and so we weren't in a position where we had to say which one was priority over the other. Each office has different deadlines in terms of when you can submit your project request. They're all within the next week, so again, they're all due in March. In terms of when Congress will actually adopt a final budget, if you've seen what's happening in Washington, it's anybody's guess. They're funding the government two weeks at a time right now. And so, I mean, it would be our hope that over, they have to pass something by this fall, because the new federal fiscal year starts October 1st, but whether they do another continuing resolution or whether they adopt a whole new budget with those requests, we don't know. But what happens is each of the legislators will submit a list to the Appropriations Committee with their priorities, and then the Appropriations Committee has to deliberate which ones they want to actually put in the final spending bill that goes before the full Congress. And so, that's sort of the process. I'd hope we'd hear by fall, but that's if they actually adopt a budget.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselwoman Germanie.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too want to congratulate the Officers of the Year, and on top of that, a few of them have been nominated for the Everyday Hero Award, which is April 3rd, the United Way, and I believe it's at Leroy's Hall. So, it'll be proud to go to that and see our public safety officers, be honored at that and hear their stories. They make me proud anyway. I'm so proud of how much they've grown and how far we've come since we put that program in place. Also, kudos to Mark and department for going after all these grants and getting us this money that's going to help our city and help us grow and improve everything, so thank you for all your hard work and your whole department. Thank you. That's all.
Counselwoman Lamore?
Thank you, Your Honor. Congratulations to Officer Smithers and firefighter Hubert as well. Once again, it's always great to see these shining stars in our city, so just let's keep it going. Let's keep it rolling. Love it. Next on my list, second time I've mentioned it tonight, that crosswalk going into St. Mary's Park. It's now becoming a headache for me because I've got residents across the street that are not happy, cars aren't stopping for it, they've got little children, and those little children are enticed to go across the street. And Elm Avenue is, we all know is extremely busy street, and I'd really like to have that problem solved sooner than later, because I think that's a, it's a need, not a want, and I think that it's going to be a problem in the very near future, especially if somebody gets hit out there. So it's just a dangerous situation, and I'd like to really get rid of it. Mark, thank you again for all these grant applications. Bring in more. Love it. If there's more we can do to help you, we want to do it any way possible, because this is great stuff. The infrastructure in this city is necessary, and it's going to help with the housing improvement, the housing development that we have going on, and just, you know, I compare it to, you know, improving your house that's all boarded up and opening up and, you know, unpiling that cork and watching everything flow through. And that's what I really compare the grade separation at the CSX tracks to. That little thing right there, it's a big project, but that could really open up a vast different amount of things going on in this city, not just in this end of the city, but also on the others, in the east side of the city as well, where we have a lot of problems with our rail separation between the streets and the public being so close. This, I think, is the forefront to get this done, and it's very necessary, and I think it's a good project, and getting as much help as possible from all the people we can get is gratefully appreciated, and I appreciate your department's work on that, and I think it's, just don't give up on it. I really appreciate your help on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselman Felder?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, congratulations to Officer Smithers and firefighter Hubert. It is a pleasure to be able to recognize gentlemen like these for their service, and it's wonderful to see how representative they are, a reflection of their departments. The bar within each of those departments is very, very high, so the fact that they both achieved the award that they did speaks volumes. Would like to wish a very happy St. Patrick's Day and Ramadan to the residents of the city, and then acknowledge the passing of Bill Hassett, who was a local business owner right here downtown and was also a member of several service organizations within the community. He will certainly be missed. I agree with Counselwoman Vining. I'm very excited to finally be doing housing policy and look forward to having that discussion and reviewing the materials that have been presented to us this evening, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselman Hader?
Yes, I'd like to not only congratulate, but thank firefighter Hubert and officer Smithers for their service to this community. I want to piggyback off what Counselwoman Germanie said about Everyday Heroes. I don't know if anybody's not been to that event, but it is one of the best events I've ever been to. Tickets are still available, Leroy's Hall, April 3rd. And then, I'd like to thank Mr. Willie for being here and his presentation, and I'd like to thank all of you that served here before me, because like I said, for somebody who grew up and spent their whole childhood at Carnes Park and saw the total deterioration that happened there, when I drive by there, my mom still lives in the neighborhood, I get proud every time I drive by there and see the condition, and I seriously can't wait to see what we do with these other parks, so thank you.
Thanks, Counselman. Well, just a couple of items for me, and I'll just start again as well as thanking the police officer Smithers and of course firefighter Hubert for their, not just the recognition and being commended by their, and selected by their peers, but for their day-in and day-out work. We heard that in the presentations of, they serve the community and they're here for that service, and I congratulate them for every day that they're here and work for us, but also that their peers have recognized them in this fashion. You know, it's been said, I want to thank the staff and the grants and the grant application. I think that that just shows the hard work that you don't see that's here at the meeting or necessarily in the fact sheets, the diligence it takes to research and then apply, and then securing grants is not an easy task. And for the ten that you submit, you're hoping to get one or two that get approved. So these are the ones that are moving forward, in other words, that we've attempted as well. There's many resources that we have and partnerships that we have, both here locally, whether it be in regionally through SEMCOG and through the state, through the Michigan Municipal League, and then of course our federal partners that provide these type of opportunities. So I think one point that I got from the conversation on the grants that are being received and submitted, there's no local match. That means the funds go directly, and I think Mr. Cochran spoke greatly about where that, if we receive the other grant, where it's going to be processed through. And then the other, and the third one, was the match funding that'll go to the funding we receive federally. So again, no local dollars will be spent at this point, but it'll continue to get the grant funds to supplement the matches. So I commend for the research, but also the success. Earlier today in our work session, there was a presentation, it was on our Housing Strategy Master Plan. It's been commented by council members already. If you were not here or are now watching now and didn't see the presentation on the work session, please go back and view that. You'll have an understanding about what might be, what is being planned, what is being identified as some of the needs, but also the strengths and the regions within our community that have different functions to it, both opportunities, but also the challenges. And I look forward to reading the 100-page report that we did not get tonight, but it was a quite high-level overview, so I'd ask the residents, if you have an interest, please go back and look at the work session that was, will be available through impact. So those are my comments this evening. Clerk Treasurer LaVoy?
I just have one comment. The taxes for those who weren't able to pay before the deadline are now available to be paid at the county. We sent those over at the end of last week, and the county's accepting payments. So we've had quite a few questions at the Clerk Treasurer's office, and I wanted to make sure that we announce that this evening.
Thank you. Senator Manager Robinson, any comments this evening?
Yes, Your Honor and Counsel, I would like to yield my comments to Director Cochran as he wants to talk about the ribbon cutting from Carnes Park.
Wonderful.
As if you haven't seen enough of me this evening. We're very proud and extremely excited to announce April 15th, at 6:30 PM is going to be the ribbon cutting at Carnes Park. You will all receive an invitation that's going out this week. This will be in place of our work session on April 15th, so there won't be a work session that evening. We'll all meet at the park, celebrate the opening, and then come back here for the regular meeting. But I wanted to address a couple different things. So the park is open, and Director Tolstad assures me it's actively being used by our residents. Late last week, the, all the nets were put up on the facility, so the tennis ball, or the tennis court, the volleyball, and the pickleball nets were all put up. The reason they were put up after all of the other parks are because the contractor was responsible as part of their contract in doing that this year to make sure that everything was fine. We are aware there's a couple minor issues with the pickleball nets that we're actively addressing. The restrooms in all the parks are targeted to be open April 1st, so the restrooms won't be open quite yet at Father Carnes Park, but other than that, the park is open, available for everybody to use, and we hope that everybody enjoys it. Certainly, Counselman Hader, we think it's a gym for the neighborhood and everybody else around it, and so we'd like to thank council for your support in moving that project forward. I think it's certainly something to be proud of.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Next is citizens' comments, and at this time we'll take comments from those present. Just be mindful of the, kind of the structure of the chamber. Please identify yourself and your jurisdiction of residence, and mindful that the three minutes.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Sandy Lambrix, City of Monroe. Several years ago, the world watched in awe at a virus we had never experienced before. It was during this uncertain time that COVID-19 became a household word. With daily reminders to wear a mask, students stayed at home distant learning, while people suddenly became hesitant visiting family and friends we had all taken for granted before. A new, deeper level of appreciation and respect was given to our front lines of all branches. It was during this unstable time that I was laid off from my job. That's when a thought came to me to propose a statement asking Monroe City Council if St. Mary of the Immaculate Conception can be officially proclaimed as the patronist saint for the city of Monroe. So I decided to act upon this idea. As I expected and was reminded, that community members can oppose our Christian beliefs, faith, and traditions. Various reactions are foreseen, and they're all perfectly correct. It's the individual right if you choose to or not to participate. Many thanks to our founding fathers, U.S. servicemen and women, past and present, that we can exercise a multitude of freedoms, including freedom of religion or non-religion. Many countries, states, cities, and private individuals worldwide have chosen a patron saint to offer comfort and hope in our hours of need. As a result, the Catholic Church has officially appointed for the citizens of the United States and Michigan, the Blessed Mary, Mother of Jesus, as our patronist saint for her optimal inspiration, strength, mercy, guidance, protection, and unconditional love. Here's a short list of other famous saints you may have heard of. St. Nicholas, St. Valentine, St. Patrick, St. Michael, and lastly, St. John respectfully. City of Detroit proclaims St. Anne as their one and only official patronist saint, while the last I checked, the city of New Orleans has five patron saints, but I'm not going to list them all. Not to diminish the importance of our saints, who may be anyone in heaven and recognized on earth or not, we certainly do not idolize them over Almighty God. I recommend St. Mary of the Immaculate Conception to once again be proclaimed the patronist saint officially for the city of Monroe. In honor of our Frenchtown pioneers who established a hewn-together rustic log cabin that became Saint Anton's Catholic Church, founded in 1788 and later renamed St. Mary's Catholic Church, established in 1845, celebrating collectively 236 years of wonderful singing, praying, and fellowship, located on the corner of Elm Avenue and Monroe Street. Everyone is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir.
John Wenzel, 15433 Albin Road, Petersburg, Michigan. I challenge this council to tell me another city east of the Mississippi River in the United States that has a wastewater plant that smells as bad as yours. And I'd also like an explanation why. Can anyone do this? Mayor, do you have an answer?
Well, Mr. Wenzel, this is your time for public comment, if you wish to make that.
It's a question of the council. If you aren't here to answer questions, who is, sir?
Well, we are here to answer questions, but this is your time for your time of your three minutes, if you wish to speak.
I yield to you, sir.
I don't have an answer for you today, so if you're finished.
Very well.
Thank you for your time.
You do.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir?
Elliot James, 633 Stone Street. I'd like to thank the council and mayor. I've seen that the work is being done on my bridge, my bridge. And the second thing is, can anybody tell me what's going on with the land over on Telegraph by Duffy? Is it going to be made into anything, or is there going to be open land? And is Duffy's going to be open? And the building, is it going to be sold to somebody, or something going to be put in it?
I don't know if I have a complete answer for you this evening, but I know that's items that you're asking is actually being worked on through the development director and Mr. Cochran. While the city has purchased the properties, it's being developed for future use. We don't have, we don't, while there's RFPs and other things going out, if you want to, I'll just make contact with Mr. Cochran, who can give you more details. I don't have all the details, although in fact, it is being developed, and the city does own it.
That's all I need. Thank you.
It's close. Other comments from those present here this evening? See no further comments? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry. I almost just thought, we're not adjourned, we have another item on our agenda here. It's a consideration to go into close executive session for the purpose of city manager quarterly review. I almost got out. I just, I realized that we weren't leaving early this evening, so we're looking for a motion to go into close executive.
Motion to go into close executive session for the purpose of the city manager quarterly review and slash check-in.
I'm sorry, if I may. Sorry to be overly technical, but I think there was a motion and a second on adjourn, so if we could just have that withdrawn by the person that made the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Both?
And I reconsider my motion to go into close executive session for the purpose of city manager quarterly review and slash check-in.
There's a motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilman Germani to go into close executive session for city manager quarterly review and check-in. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining, Germani, Lemoore, Felder, Hader, Mayor Clark.